Move to um public comment on oh, sorry. We have to approve the agenda, sorry. And I would like to move to actually amend the agenda to reflect that Lisa will be talking about the second interim financials as well as the January financials. That would be item six B, review and approval of the January financials. And we just want to add the second interim report onto that. So I would move to amend the agenda to reflect that.
I second.
Thanks, Cornell. Christie?
I have a question is do we need to have the interim report approved tonight?
That's a Lisa question, I guess.
It does. I guess it doesn't have to be approved tonight. I mean, it's the same information as the January financials, so.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Totally get it. I'm just just to that we're, you know, I know we're we're just super cautious about these things. And I just if we don't have to approve it tonight, I think we probably should just push it to the next meeting and have it on the agenda.
Okay.
Sure, we can just approve the financials. Great. So then I'll move to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
Thanks, Byron. Cornell?
Approve.
Christie?
Approve.
Ernesto?
Prove.
Angeline?
Approve.
Thanks, everybody. Now we will move to public comment on any items on the agenda. Would anyone like to comment? If there are no comments, we'll move to non-agenda public comment. Any comments that are not on the agenda? Okay, we'll move to item four, items for consent. We would be approving the minutes from our last meeting on January 19th. Does anyone need to take these off the consent agenda for discussion? Okay, I would move to approve the items for consent or the item for consent.
Second.
Thanks, Cornell. Christie?
Approve.
Ernesto?
Approve.
Byron?
Approve.
Angeline?
Approve.
Thank you. And moving on to reports, first up are, actually, this should say executive director's report. Katie, want to take it away?
Hi, everybody. So it's a busy time of year. We have our lottery happening tomorrow evening for open enrollment for next year. We added some extra info sessions to meet the needs of all the parents that are interested in the school. So we did one yesterday. And yeah, we're really excited to be hosting our lottery from the Boys and Girls Club tomorrow via Zoom, of course. And so just been running test lotteries and making sure everything's ready to go. We finished all our re-enrollment of our current students for next year. And obviously have been working on the whole COVID protection plan and the safety plan in order to prepare to reopen and serve students who want to attend school in person soon. So, you know, making sure our facility is ready. We had a visit from the LA County Department of Public Health today to inspect our facility. And she she actually really liked it. She's like, I've been visiting a lot of schools. She's like, I want my child to go to a school like this. She's like, I really like these, the wood desks and cushions. And of course, all our hand sanitizer and sinks and outdoor classrooms too. So anyway, we got the seal of approval there. And yeah, just putting some finishing touches. So that's what's going on on campus.
Thanks, Katie. If anyone has any questions about that, can I have questions?
Yeah, I have a question with Cornell. Katie, how's the re-enrollment going? Are we getting most people to come back?
Yes, we have very strong re-enrollment. I think we had a couple of people have moved, you know, moving out of state as a result of the pandemic. So a few people, you know, due to moving, but otherwise, you know, I'd say 98% re-enrollment rate.
That's great. Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
What's the level of people that have opted in for the reopening plan? Or are we going to discuss that later on the?
Um, we had a very strong desire of people to have their children attend in person with our hybrid plan. So let's see, I could pull up the numbers, but off the top of my head, you know, third grade, every single person wants to come back in person. And I think 14 of the 18 first graders, I think, let's see. Second grade was, I think, only two opted out. And then kindergarten, it was around 85% of everyone re-enrolled. So one class, there were a few more people, you know, wanting to stay in distance learning. But overall, yeah, it was definitely, you know, we had surveyed people previously. And this was a huge shift to wanting people to be in person.
Yeah, wow. Okay.
All right, shall we move on to Lisa?
Guys, can I share my screen?
Yeah.
I don't have rights, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's see. Hold on one sec.
Got it. Thanks. Can everybody see the dashboard in front of them? Okay, great. So we are at our second interim. Every year, the schools have to do a first interim report to their authorizer and to the state, a second interim, and then their annual report, which is the final year-end unaudited actuals. This is second interim. It goes through January. So the the reports that you're looking at are getting reported to the state through their software. And at the end of this packet, there's a you can see that report and how it matches to this dashboard. So I just I'll show you at the end of this. But for now, just know that this is our financials trued up through January 31st, going to the state as they are. At the top, you can see obviously our ADA versus our budget is still in the red, but it's going to stay that way because we, you know, COVID. But we're we're still doing okay. Our net income is in the green. We have cash on hand. Our year-end cash is red, but it's not it's not desperate. You know, it's actually better than I expected. And when I get down there, I'll show you. We have 117 students, and that's what we're forecasting out. Going to go down here to the income statement. So right here is your income statement. We're projecting 1.6 in revenue and 1.56 in expenses, leaving us with a net income of $47,000, which is good considering our original budget said 3.3 right here in blue. So the variance of 44,000. You can see that this this section right here is what's changed since last board meeting. And you can see that the fundraising has gone up by $17,000 since we last looked at it. Altogether, right now, our grants and fundraising are forecasting at 62,000. That's how much we've actually received. So it could be more than that. But I don't like to forecast unless we actually have it. So right now, or as of January 31st, we were at about 62,000 in fundraising. So that is good. I'm going to go down here to the balance sheet. I wanted to point out this 300,000, 301,000. This is what we are forecasting that we will be that will sit on our balance sheet as revenue that we have not received as of 6:30 of '21. It will be due to us from the state. And what that is, is originally last month, if you look at the dashboard, it was at like 485,000. This month, it's at 301,000 because El Rio was able to get a waiver on the deferrals for the last four months of fiscal year 2021. So you remember that that was a major concern. We were applying to get a waiver on the deferrals because we're a new school and we don't have any of the COVID funding coming our way and all that. So this was a big help in our cash at the end of the year. Does that make sense? Does anybody have any questions about that? No? Okay. So our projected end of the year cash is 110,000. That will that that will have it. It'll look reserve at 7%, which is good. It'll be because we received, you know, the $250,000 revolving loan, which El Rio is very lucky to be getting that because there are several small schools that didn't have enough enrollment to even get the second half of their revolving loan. But you guys are in good shape for that. So that's still in the forecast. What else? I think that's about it. As far as changes from last time we all talked, does anybody have any questions? Or Katie, do you have anything to add that I might have missed?
No, I think you I think you summed it up nicely.
Okay, so let me just quickly show you.
Such good news. All good news.
I know. You know, I feel really happy for you guys about this because we've definitely been worried, right? New schools, this is such a hard time to open. But so you've got your financial analysis. Oh, the check register. Let's take a quick look at that. This is the check register from January. See if anybody has any questions on anything that's going on here.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, please.
So I saw up there in your previous slide that the expenses are a lot lower than we budgeted. I think like on the top.
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, if you're like, how does that happen? Like, how does that happen?
Well, we haven't been in at the school, right? I mean, that's part of it. Let me just open my notes here so I can look at the actual variance reasons.
Also, that will change after this month because we've been now getting things in order to serve students in person.
Well, I don't think it's going to change because we've already forecasted. That's part of our budget, I believe.
Well, a little bit, I guess. I mean, a little bit in that I think we shifted some funding. I mean, I guess it won't change our expenses, but it'll shift in how they're allocated. Because I think we moved a lot to.
Capitalized equipment.
Yeah, capitalized equipment. And then now we're shifting them back to, you know.
So I'm sorry, I don't know who asked that question, but I do want to share. On the notes on the second page, you'll be able to see exactly what has changed. So our certificated salaries are about $38,000 lower. And and here is all the reasoning why. We didn't put in the Mandarin or the Spanish. Two of the teachers are newer than what we expected to pay. The $35,000 difference for certificated is the RSP teacher is being paid. Is we didn't hire an RSP teacher. We're doing it through cross-country, the special ed consultant we use.
Yeah. Are you? Are you actually showing a screen right now?
Oh, you can't. I know. It's because I didn't start this Zoom meeting. I have to reshare every time I put up something new. Oh, it's totally my fault. Sorry. So anyway, on the notes, you can see I've separated it by certificated, classified, supplies, operating expenses, everything, and why it's changed so much. So the certificated is $40,000 lower, the classified is $10,000 lower. This, the supplies, the reason that this is 76,000 lower is because we moved a lot of equipment, like all the new computers and iPads we bought. We had originally put them to uncapped资本ized equipment. But because we bought them in bulk, we were able to capitalize and spread the expense over five years for the equipment. So that has a lot to do with it. It doesn't change the fact that we've put a lot of cash out, but it does in an accounting treatment, it changes our expenses. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely. Just don't realize what you guys have seen and what you haven't. So this should be very thorough for your understanding. Going to put that back, going to go over to. I'm going to reshare and go back to the board packet. Okay. So in the packet, okay, can you guys see the check register now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that? Most of these are standard monthly payments. The 7,300 for sped, that is the outside services that I was just referring to, the RSP and any of the special ed costs that we didn't, we aren't paying salary for. We're paying it to an outside services. No? Okay. I'm going to move down to the credit card expenses, next page. Just showing the different curriculum we've bought on the credit card. And then monthly subscriptions, mostly for either office software or recruitment for for the lottery. This is the very detailed cash flow forecast, which you're welcome to peruse. If anybody ever wants me to go over that in detail, I'm certainly willing. And then on the last page here, you'll see the first interims, second interims. We're not going to go over them. We'll go over them at the next board meeting. Just know that the figures are exactly what you're looking at for January. So that is all I have to present in the way of the finances. Mostly good news.
Definitely.
Yeah.
So I'm just wondering, like, in terms of fundraising, I don't know if we're going to talk about that agenda. I don't have it in front of me, but like, do we need to raise a bunch more money? Like, because everything's so positive right now.
I think we're still we're still on track for the same fundraising goals that we discussed, you know, the whole time. That that has not changed. And, you know, we're anticipating having to raise. I'm hoping that we raise the same amount of of money in the second semester that we were able to raise in the first semester.
Yeah, it would always be helpful because, you know, I think we've got everything in the forecast that we need. But because you guys are reopening, things could come up that we don't know about or that, you know, you don't know about even, you know? This is the first time you've opened, and so we think we've got everything in here, but there's possibilities of not. So I don't think you want to take the I don't want to put the brakes on fundraising at all. Because it's still, you know, I mean, it looks nice. We're doing better. It's great. But, you know, anything can happen, you know, especially with state funding. If they run out, then they they'll just hold it, you know? It's only happened once a long time ago, but we were scarred by it, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Do you have your questions for Lisa? Questions regarding budget?
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Lisa.
Yeah.
Moving on to facilities, everything is pretty much good to go at the site. We are, we are good. We are getting some pop-up tents ready to go for our outdoor classrooms. The modulators are up and running. All the work on them has been completed. And we are, we're good to go on all of the inspections and everything. Everything passed, so we're good. There's not much of a facilities report today. There's still some outstanding stuff that can be done by parents. And we're having, you know, a lot of little things done to get the site ready to go for in-person. But by and large, we're good. So that's exciting. I don't have much of a facilities report for you because everything is is good on that front. Does anyone have any questions about facilities?
I guess it's not really a facility sort of, and maybe everyone else already knows this and I missed it. When is the when are when are you expecting to bring students back?
We are bringing kindergarten back the week of March 8th. And the following week, we'll be bringing first through third back, so March 15th.
Very exciting.
Yep.
Based on based on our approval of our plan and submission to the state.
Yes, the seat. We'll we'll get more into that when we talk COVID prevention program. We can go into how we're bringing kids back and all the measures that we're taking when we get into the review of the CPP. Anyone else have any facilities questions, or shall I turn it over to Christie? All right, Christie, take it away. Ad hoc executive evaluation committee report.
Okay, well, Cornell, please chime in too. We have had really just gotten started with the process. I think we all agreed that we would, we're contributing. Antoinette had some resources from her work, and I have some from mine. And so we are in the process of sharing those evaluations that have been used in other schools and settings at the executive level and trying to kind of pull something from them that will be the right fit for El Rio. And Cornell has offered to to help kind of pull from those resources to put something together. I'm still working on getting some of the previous ones from Ocean. And we we also have ones from outside of the educational setting, but that are small organizations that are aligned. So we we are at the beginning, I would say. And I think we have the goal to get, you know, at least whether it's a draft or, you know, something together for the board for feedback, ideally by the next meeting. That would be the goal. That may or may not be realistic. Cornell, do you want to add anything?
I think we can do it by the next meeting. We just got to consolidate the various forms that we have. And then, yeah, I think we can do it by the next meeting.
All right, you're optimistic.
Thank you for that. Anyone have any questions? All right, so we'll move on to our items for discussion. Item A, the review and approval of the administrative revision materials. So as you all may know, LEUSD has granted an administrative revision to us. And that is just regarding the restructuring, the org restructure. They asked to see a revised charter petition that just reflects the new organizational structure as well as the revised HR protocols that you have found in your board packet. Those two things will be submitting to LEUSD for their approval. And right now, we are going to be reviewing and approving them as well. The changes that were made in the charter petition just concern roles and responsibilities and basically consolidating the two co-director roles into one executive director role. So anywhere in the charter petition that said co-directors, it now says executive director. And as you saw in the in the board materials, I put a basically a redlined PDF in there so everybody can see where the changes are. But they're basically, you know, there's not a substantive change anywhere other than titles. We moved the operations director roles and responsibilities primarily to Katie's role as executive director. And then the operations manager role was revised to reflect a more managerial level set of responsibilities, roles and responsibilities more aligned. And the office manager stayed pretty much the same. The new org chart is in there as well that we approved at our last meeting. And that's pretty much it. That is the the substance of the revision to the charter petition. And then the HR protocols are basically everything that was already in our employee handbook. So just reiterating everything that we already had in place. But then we also put in a checklist that's really clear, steps to be taken for all new hires. And we can just go down the list. And obviously, Katie is going to be overseeing all of this. She is the executive director and she has primary oversight on this. And the operations manager remains the custodian of records. But Katie will be reviewing, as you can see, all documentation from steps one to four is reviewed by the executive director. So it seems very robust to me and very clear in ways that it needed to be made more clear. So I feel good about where we're at. Does anyone have any questions about the changes that were made or the administrative revision?
I think it looks good.
Great.
Yeah, I think it looks great.
Great. I mean, we had, we had done a lot of this work prior, um, in prior board meetings. So this is just a reflection of the work that we have been doing the last couple of months. And now we just need to submit it to LAUSD and they can review it and hopefully approve it and we will be good to go. Um, so if no one has any other questions about these two items, I would move to approve, um, the revised charter petition and the HR protocols.
A second.
Thanks, Christie. Um, Cornell? Oh, Crystal joined us, sorry. Crystal?
Approve.
Cornell, you approve. Ernesto?
Right.
Ernesto, you there? Did we lose Ernesto?
He's still on.
He is still on and he just spoke.
Approved, sorry. I don't know why that, it wouldn't. I'm trying to talk, approve.
Um, sorry. Uh, Byron?
Approve.
Angeline?
Approve.
Thanks, everybody. Um, so we are, um, already heard about, moving on to item B, we heard about, uh, and reviewed the January financials. I think we just need to approve them. So I would move to approve the January financials that we just took a look at.
I'll second.
Again, oh, sorry.
Thanks, Ernesto. I think that was Ernesto. Crystal?
Approve.
Cornell?
Approve.
Christie?
Approve.
Byron?
Approve.
Angeline?
Approve.
Thanks, everybody. Um, moving on to, um, El Rio's COVID prevention program. So as folks might know, there has been a lot of, a lot of different iterations, uh, of what we need to provide to both the state and the Department of Public Health. Um, the latest version is this COVID prevention program. And it is, um, a document that we have been working on and revising in, in various iterations, um, for the last few months. Um, when we first established the, the COVID task force, we put together a whole document that was back in, I think, December or even November. Um, but now they're asking for this COVID prevention program. So it's basically just going through all of the different protocols. Who has, um, the authority and responsibility, um, chain of command, the, you know, reopening schedule, um, how we're going to identify COVID hazards, um, how employees are participating and how employees are protected. Um, everything from our screening protocols to physical distancing, mask wearing, um, how we have maximized our, um, facility to be as safe as possible, our cleaning and disinfecting, um, protocols, hand sanitizing, um, PPE. Um, and then of course the exposure management plan, um, and the compliance team that's responsible for, um, making that happen. So I'm just going to go over a few things, um, like top line items. Um, first of all, as you all know, we are doing onsite testing. Um, that has already started happening, um, weekly testing with Co-Verify. Um, we are having everybody working onsite be tested every week. And we are also asking that all students who are returning to school take an initial COVID test, um, before they come to school. And then after that initial COVID test, we'll be testing surveillance testing 25% of the student population every week. Um, that's just a recommended best practice. So Co-Verify comes onsite, they set up, um, we get all of the vials, we spit into the tubes. Uh, um, it's all facilitated by a nurse. And then all the results are, are delivered directly to the Department of Health. If there are any positive cases, it goes straight to the Department of Health and all, their whole portal is HIPAA compliant. So results can be sent, you know, directly to families and directly to employees. So that's great and that's already in process. Um, as Katie told you, the Department of Health, we asked the Department of Health to come to the site to just walk through and give us any feedback. Um, they were really positive. They thought the site looked great. Um, they gave us a couple of small things to, you know, a couple of things that we hadn't yet done, like install the hand sanitizer stations in the portable classrooms. That's obviously going to be done, but felt really good that the Department of Health signed off on that. Um, we have janitorial staff coming every morning to do cleaning. Um, everybody is going to be screened every day. Um, kids coming onsite are not even getting out of their cars. It's all valet drop-off and pickup. Kids are going to be temperature checked in their car. They'll get their mask on, they'll come out. Um, our cohorts, the cohort model is, you know, the small group model. So we're going to have between, I believe, um, six and 14, uh, students per group. It kind of ranges depending on the class and how many kids opted in. But, um, that group, that small group is going to be with two adults. That's the max. Um, so those are our small groups and obviously physical distancing. We've set up outdoor classrooms everywhere. Um, every class has outdoor space as well as inside space. I think there's going to be a mix on the schedule. We have a mix of indoor/outdoor with primarily outdoor for every class. Um, we've had the HVAC cleaned. There's new filters, filtration system on the HVAC. Every classroom has a air purification, uh, air, you know, a standalone air purifier. Um, what else am I leaving out here, Katie? Um, we're providing masks to anyone who doesn't have them. Um, in terms of the, uh, let's see, communications to everyone, uh, you know, people know to stay home when sick. The screening process, um, obviously takes away some of that. So if anyone is showing symptoms, they're not coming to school or they're not going to be allowed on campus. Um, what else do we have in here? Sorry, just going through here. Hand sanitizing, we have all these, now we have multiple sinks, hand washing stations, um, a schedule for bathroom use. Um, and then our exposure management plan, obviously we're a small school. We have a small team. So Katie and I are doing our best to make that really clear to people that everybody just gets in touch with Katie if they've had any exposure. Um, if there's a case, we obviously shut, shut down any area that has, the exposed individual has been and gets deep cleaned. We have an isolation area which is outside, a quarantine area, which we have a little sign for quarantine area. Um, I feel like we are really ready to go. Um, and this document is very, very thorough. Um, it also gives you lots of appendices to, um, you know, fill out for various different, uh, should anything happen, basically. Um, so does anyone have any questions about this document? Sorry if I was not all that clear. There's a lot to cover in here.
Looks like you guys have been super thorough.
Hopefully.
Yeah, it's, it sounds like a really well-thought-out plan. Uh, Katie, how, how are the teachers feeling?
The teachers are feeling really good. Um, I, they really liked our, um, onsite testing that we started last week. Everyone feels really good about that happening each and every week. And with the, um, testing every child who opted in as a baseline and then doing 25% every week, they feel like that's going to really make a difference to keep people safe. And I think our emphasis on being outdoors is also making, um, the teachers feel really good because the research really supports that being, um, the best way, you know, if you're indoors, tons of ventilation. And if you're outdoors, you know, you're getting that naturally. So, um, yeah, teachers are, they're really excited also. I mean, these are teachers that have never, you know, really gotten to meet their children in person. So it's like the first day of school excitement, you know?
Yeah, very exciting. That's great. I'm glad to hear that they're feeling, um, good about it.
Katie, what's the turnaround time on the Co-Verify testing that we're seeing?
It's 24 to 48 hours. Um, I think it was, uh, on the 24-hour side when we did it last week. So, yeah, maximum of 48.
And from a, from a budget cost standpoint, the ongoing testing plan that we have, we're all budgeted for that. It's, as we've already.
Yeah, it's in our budget now. Obviously it wasn't in our beginning of the year budget.
Yeah. But when we, it's no different than what we thought when we approved the expenditure for it.
Correct. It's in there. We have, we paid a initial program fee and then, um, you know, we calculated out the costs for the ongoing testing. Obviously, anyone with insurance is, um,
They bill the insurance.
They bill the insurance. And then anyone without insurance, um, we would be covering those costs.
Have we looked into whether there's any state funding or federal funding for the testing for reimbursement for that? Or is it not a, a big enough expense to be worried about?
Um, so, I mean, it's definitely something that is, um, you know, potentially going to be funded by the government in, you know, some form that hasn't been approved yet. But, um, I mean, schools that already got funding this year, you know, CARES Act funding, they can use that funding for those expenses. We, as a brand-new school, didn't qualify for that. It's next funding that is potentially available to us, you know, we could put it toward this cost.
Okay, thanks, Katie.
Anyone have any, um, other questions about the CPP? So the next steps for us in terms of, you know, this whole process is, um, once we approve this as a board, um, we would submit it to, um, the LA Department of Public Health and, uh, the state as well. Um, we also have a checklist. Um, and then they have seven days to respond to the plan. Um, they give us any revisions, um, that they feel like we need. Um, they may not respond, which means that we're good to go. But if they do respond with revisions, then we make the revisions. Um, but that process is basically, once we submit, we hear back within seven days. So, um, once we approve this, we will be sending it off to them. And, uh, hopefully we'll, I think it'll be plenty of time for the turnaround. Um, and in, often approving this, I would also like to, um, move that we approve it with the authorization to Katie and I to make changes as the Department of Health guidance changes, as, as we know it will, because we're going to have to revise this as the guidance changes. It's been changing pretty much every week. So I'm kind of thinking of it as a, as a living document that will be revised per public health guidance. So if no one has any other questions, I would move to approve the CPP, um, and authorize, uh, both myself and Katie to, um, make needed changes per the Department of Health.
Rebecca, just as a clarifying question to that, so are you saying that, um, based on recommendations from the CDC, then you as the board chair and Katie as the educational director would sign off together without bringing it back to the board to make those necessary changes because it's going to happen so frequently? I, I just want to make sure I understood.
Yeah. Yes, exactly. Not, not the CDC, but the, the public health guidance from both the state and the county, um, because it's changing weekly.
Yeah, or hourly.
Yeah, exactly. As you well know.
Yes.
Just in, in terms of like, I think more little things like,
Yeah.
um, you know, you don't have to have six feet of distance. You have to have four feet of distance or, you know, whatever, those, those kinds of changes. We would just want to reflect the most updated guidance.
Got it.
I'll second.
Thanks, Christie. Uh, Crystal?
Approve.
Cornell?
Approve.
Ernesto?
Approve.
Byron?
Approve.
Angeline?
Approve.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Uh, we've got item D, contracts over $5,000. We've got WiseTal, our phone system installation, um, so we can have telephones in the classrooms. All the wiring is done. They just need to come back and turn it on, basically. Um, and the contract is for just over $5,000. I believe it's 5,500, maybe? Yes, 5,510. Um, we'll have a phone in each classroom, um, voicemail, et cetera. Um, does anyone have any questions about that? I would move to approve this contract then.
Second.
Crystal?
Approve.
Uh, Christie?
Approve.
Ernesto?
Approve.
Byron?
Approve.
Angeline? You still there, Angeline?
Approve.
Thank you. Um, okay, last agenda item is our review of the 2021 Form 700 procedures. And I'm going to hand it over to our dear secretary Byron to discuss this matter.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Um, so everybody should have received from, uh, the county board of supervisors, executive office, an email with instructions for e-filing of your 2021, uh, Form 700 disclosure. I think everybody, we, I don't think we have anybody who wasn't on the board last year. So last year we completed Form 700s. We, we did them on the standard form because we didn't have a conflict of interest code adopted yet. We did them manually. We now have a conflict of interest code, uh, that we approved. Uh, I think it was about six months ago, approved by the, the county board of supervisors. And we are now all set up to be efilers through their electronic system. So check your El Rio email. You should have, uh, an email from them. There are some instructions there on how to, I think they assume that you have a password, but you probably don't have a password. So you need to do the forgot password thing to set one up. When you log in, uh, you'll, you'll see the correct information on what jurisdiction, what address, things like that are, are all pre-filled in the form. Um, the important distinction from, from the previous Form 700 is because we're now code filers, because there's a conflict of interest code, that what you disclose aligns with, uh, the categories in the code. So you should review it again. Uh, I can send a link to everybody to our conflict of interest code if you don't have it from previous minute meetings. But basically, uh, the, the category has to do with whether you have any business, real estate, not, you know, non-personal residence, real estate within two miles of the school, uh, whether you have in, interests in any, uh, entity, uh, that does business with the school or, or does the type of, or sells the type of products and services at school. Entity that does business with the school or does the type of, or sells the type of products and services that school purchases. Or whether you have any financial relationships or dealings with anybody who works at the school. So you can see the categories, complete your form. They're due. At the absolute latest, April 1. We should try to have them in earlier than that if we can. Don't push it to the very last minute. They are public documents available to the public when you enter in your email address and things. You should use your El Rio. School email address for that. And then we will, after we e-file. With the county, we'll send copies of these forms to LAUSD that requires us to also send them copies. So no hard copies, just the e-file. If you have any questions about the form, I'm happy to help. You can contact me. And go through any questions that you have on the disclosures or just the mechanics of the form, or if you're just having trouble figuring it out. So any questions, anybody?
Did you mention when it's due?
Yeah, April, April 1.
Great.
So will someone at the school get notified when we're all done?
I'm responsible for tracking it all. I can see in the system, the county system, who's uploaded there.
Great.
So, you know, if there are any stragglers, you'll be hearing from me and I'll make sure we get them on.
All right, thanks.
You got it.
Great. Well, everybody, thank you so much. And our next board meeting is scheduled for March 24. 6:00 PM. Please let me know if you're not able to make that.
Did you say March 24?
I did.
Okay, thanks.
March 24 at 6:00 PM. I know that there had been some discussion about wanting to make the meeting earlier. So that's something that we could put on the agenda. For discussion.
Earlier than 6, is that what you're saying?
Earlier than 6, yeah. I don't know if that's of interest to people, but. If 5:00 PM.
I just want to throw out really quickly that it may be challenging for me right now to do before 6. Because of my childcare or there is no childcare. So just throwing that out there.
Okay. I just remember having, hearing talk at one of our last board meetings that was at 5, that this was a better time for people. So. I just didn't want to, you know, if it's something that we want to change going forward, just let me know and we can put it on the agenda for discussion. But. Maybe going forward after even this year, we could move it to 5. Just something to think about. But for now, our next meeting is March 24 at 6:00 PM. And I think that's it. I think I can adjourn this meeting.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye bye.